All right, good morning. Good morning to you all. Thank you very much for coming. And I am going to welcome you to the Good Hugh County. It's close to a job fair, all right? We get an opportunity to hear about the different jobs that are available in the county. So I will turn this over to Briggs.
And I'll pass over to Jessica.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Albrecht. I am an HR manager at Good Hugh County. Pleased to have the opportunity to welcome you all. Thank you, Dan, for initiating all of this. I think it's a, it's a great program that we're doing. So the purpose of today's committee of talk about public service careers and opportunities. As you know, there's challenges throughout lots of different employers and finding qualified candidates. And so we wanted to take a few minutes and tell you what it takes to work for Good Hugh County and a lot of the different career fields that we have. So we have presenters from a lot of different departments. So government operations, IT, we've got our IT director, John Smith, will present to you. Public works, Cory and Alex will be presenting. We have some building inspection opportunities that Lisa Haney will talk about. And we'll spend a couple of minutes talking about opportunities within the Health and Human Services Division. The sheriff's office will talk about some of the interesting work that they do, and it's not all just patrol deputy work. And then Briggs and Amanda will do a wrap up and talk about a few things. They've done some presentations at area high schools, and so they've got some tidbits for high school students. All right, so I will go ahead and turn it over. Who's our first presenter?
First is gonna be a video, that is, if we can get sound.
Sounds good.
Exactly. Okay, so they told us that the speaker in the room was out, but I didn't know if that was gonna work or not. So it was a shot in the dark, so we'll just go straight into information technology. So John, if you'd like to go up and start presenting.
Let me just say that does not indicate the level of technology.
Good morning. My name is John Smith. I'm the IT director for Good Hugh County. I'm gonna talk about technology a little bit and how it plays a part in operations of government. When you work for county IT, you get to work with a wide variety of hardware and software throughout the day. We work with everything from the technology in law enforcement vehicles to helping out with meetings and things like this. We work with every department throughout the county. Everybody uses technology to some degree, so again, we get to work with everybody. This is just a sample of some of the many different systems, technologies, and organizations we get to, we get to work with in IT. Some of these, I'm sure you recognize, Apple, Microsoft, Facebook, those kinds of things. Other vendors up here, you'd probably only see if you worked in an IT organization, but not necessarily government. And then some of them are strictly government IT. You might not see Tyler up there or Civic Class. Those are systems applications that you're only gonna get to work with if you worked in a government operation in IT. You may have heard of virtual servers and cloud computing, and those are having an impact on IT organizations everywhere, even in government. It's shrinking the size of many data centers. That's where we keep servers and networking that kind of supports the whole backbone of the organization. But, you know, there's a picture, that's one of our actual server rooms. You know, it still requires space, so we still have that physical component of servers and heating and power and security. When you work for Good Hugh County, there's an opportunity to specialize in different areas. You can see, you know, we're a fairly small department, but, you know, we support the whole county. Some of the areas of specialization include network administration and cybersecurity. We have a lot of communication support, and then, of course, technical support. Everybody, like Briggs, working with his sound issue this morning, everybody needs that technical support. And so we have an organism or part of our operation specializes in that. If you're looking to the future, as you get past high school, you start looking at careers. Some of the things that are important, you know, there are degree programs that specialize in information technology in general. Some of them can be more specific, like cybersecurity or actual networking. There are lots of certifications that can be beneficial for an IT career. There's an organization called CompTIA. They provided some of the basic technical foundations. They call it their A-plus, Network Plus, and Security Plus certifications. Microsoft, of course, has a very robust certification program, which is very helpful in all industries, including government. There are security-specific certifications that you can get. Those are just some acronyms up there, but they all relate to cybersecurity and information security. And then, of course, networking. We use a lot of different components for networking. Some of it is Cisco, which you may have heard of. But we also use Fortinet and VMware and cloud computing suppliers like Microsoft and Azure or Amazon. And don't let anybody tell you that you don't need the business skills, the soft skills as well. Working in IT, it's very important to have customer service skills. Working with lots of different projects, understanding project management and, you know, how to make projects successful. And then, of course, part of being in IT is working with the rest of the county. So, you know, being able to write well and communicate well with others is, you know, is a big part of the job as well. So it's exciting. It's very rewarding. You know, IT is used in every industry out there, but government, you know, has its unique challenges and its, and its unique opportunities. Any questions about any of that? Okay, I guess we can move on to the next one. Thank you. Thank you, John.
All right, civil engineering, civil engineering technology. So Alex and I are here to talk about the technology we use in civil engineering for Goodie County.
I'm Cory Russell, the construction manager for Goodie County.
I'm Alex. I'm the design manager for Goodie County. We flip to the next slide. So this is kind of what we do. I'm gonna ask you a question that, this can be a little interactive, by the way. When you guys were kids, did you ever mess with the streams when it rained? Made puddles, made dams, let it go back and forth? Raise your hands if you could. Okay, a couple of you. Well, this is what we do on a bigger scale, except we get to go out there, shoot it with technology, GPS, put a point to it, get an elevation, then we can put it into a computer like this and control rivers instead of just these little streams. And also figure out how to put bridges over them and stuff like that. When you do an initial survey, this is a job that you're gonna do if you want to be inside and outside. Sometimes it's gonna be cold, sometimes it's gonna be warm, and then you get to be inside when it's terrible either way. But you get to go outside, go through creeks, dams, or grow ditches. Some days are better than others. Some days you're gonna go crawling through culverts, and some days you'll be on top of them. So anyways, so once you get that, you get to design a road. And then if you ever drive down the road, you're like, man, I wish it could be better. This is what that does. You can use your head to make things better for everybody else, and then other people drive and won't even think about it, and then you did your job. And to create plans, we have to work with a bunch of different people. You draw them up so they have a nice paper copy, and then we send them off to the state. And then they look at it to make sure we're hitting all the kind of curves and stuff like that. And then you get to say, well, this is a 55 mile an hour curve, and no one else knows what you're talking about. And you can, it's a good icebreaker, I guess you could say. Anyways, so, once you get kind of through that, then you get to actually go from looking what's out there, coming up with an idea of how it can be better. Make sure you hit all your standards, put the plan together, get the money, and then actually build it. So it's a start-to-finish kind of a job. Next slide, please. So that's kind of what we're talking about. On the right there, there's the GPS. That thing basically takes satellites that are 12,000 miles up near, shoots stuff down, and tells you how high, how far left and right you are. And then on the right, the left side there, that's the CAD file, and that's what we're talking about when you design. And you're actually designing stuff and putting it into a 3D thing. So then you get a couple of computer screens and put all that points in, and then you lay over how you can make things work. So if you like computers, like technology, but also like being in the woods some days, you know, this is kind of, kind of get to be everywhere and being involved with everything all at once. So, next slide, please. And then at the end, this is basically a plan. So this is a layout. That's what I'm talking about. If you go out there and shoot this and say, well, there's a hill here, hill there, it'd probably be best we make two curves and go up and over. And this is what you make, so then we get to give it to Cory, and then he gets to build it.
So we take that information that the design group creates, and we take those curves and those hills, and we put them into our same survey equipment, as well as the contractors. And we can go out and build the road or the bridge and move the stream, all that stuff. Some of the technology here in the bottom right is our survey equipment again. That's from County Road 24 up in Cannon Falls. And then that same picture right above it is the pond that we built in that same spot. And in that picture, the dozer is using the GPS mounted to the dozer and the same files that we create to go out, build that pond to our plans, just with the dozer. Nothing we have to do except check if they're doing it correctly. And then same thing on the left there. That's a road up by Red Wing. They're paving down the road, just right off the same files we create in the office. So nothing we have to do except share the files with them, give them some control points that show them this is where the road is, keeps the equipment on the road, goes on the road, paves concrete seven inch thick, just like we want. Next slide. And then just for information, it doesn't show up very good. This is just Goodie County 2023 construction project. So we have about eight and a half million, 96,000 ton of bituminous going down this summer, which is the blacktop pavement that we go put on most of our roads, as well as several seal coat roads, which is the chip seal we put over it after we paved them to preserve that surface and get 20, 30 years out of it. And then several bridge projects. One was awarded today. One's under construction already, actually just wrapped up. And a couple, a couple of other ones planned to go out this year. So like Alex said, if you like doing this type of work, you like being inside and out, it's a good job. Next slide. So if you're looking to get into it and you're interested in getting into it, there's a couple of different ways. Two-year degrees for, to be an engineering technician, there's a list of schools there for reference. So I went to South Central College. Alex went to St. Cloud Tech. And we recently hired a kid that went to Dakota County Tech. And then if you're more interested in doing the licensed engineers program, which is what Jess and Greg were up here earlier, just got appointed county engineer. Those would be the four-year degrees on the right. And there again, for reference, Jess and Greg both went to South Dakota State. And our current assistant county engineer that's back in the office, he went to Iowa State. So there's several different options and paths you can go down. And, you know, as you work through your career, you can be more of an internal inside guy, or you can be an outside guy.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, you can always come job shadow us and give us information. This is kind of a 30,000 foot view, so.
Very quick oversight of what we do. So that's it. Any questions?
Um, no, unfortunately not right there. There is not. I think they might be starting though, it's something.
Oh, RCTC.
I'm sorry, I missed that first part. Oh, that's a great question. I'd probably have to look. I don't know their catalog off the top of my head, but.
I bet you could take some of your generals in Rochester, then you'd have to take the rest up at the U.
And there is, there is talks like for the engineering program of there being a program developed down there too.
Yep.
So.
15 years ago.
The, I remember Ryan Melhouse was a student, and he job shadowed you or the capstone project. And then he ended up working as an intern and went through the engineering program. I lost track of him, but the last I had heard he had gotten off to Hawaii. He was designing bridges. Which is pretty nice. I'd like to ask this, and John, if you could just tell two, I was gonna start this right away. So we've got 10th, 11th, 12th graders here, about 16, 17 years old. Is this the job that you're in now, is this what you knew what you wanted to do when you were a junior in high school? Or how did you get in this path in just like a minute? Like, what, what were you thinking about when you were their age, and how did it get you here? Like each of you who presented, just sharing that.
Well, I can tell you, when I was a senior in high school, nobody had a computer on their desk at home. Technology was probably one of the furthest, furthest things from my mind. I was exposed to an organization writing software for oil and gas industry and West Texas. And so that seemed like a good thing to do after high school, and it blew up in my career. Education along the way for being, looked at a lot of business classes, because technology's so.
2007, I was summer out for maintenance at Goodie County Public Works, and ended up taking an interest in engineering and going to school for the two-year program and ended up back here, construction manager.
Yeah, I grew up on a dairy farm. My dad sold the cows, and I had no idea what I was gonna do, so I was gonna play sports in college, which failed pretty miserably. Luckily Greg hired me. Summer out for a couple of years and then got full time and then was here and went to Olmsted County and came back, because it's a good county, so. Yeah, I had no idea. My cousin said you like being outside, and I said, I don't wanna be inside all the time. He said, try this. So I had no idea.
Yep. Thanks.
And then we can do the other one if you want as well.
Okay.
I'm Lisa Haney. I take care of a lot of the land offices. And when I was in high school, all I could think about was going to England for my sophomore year in college, because they had a college program in St. Cloud State. And then after that, came back after a year and decided that didn't really wanna know, know what I wanted to do. I wanted to work outside. There wasn't any women in surveying at the time, but I really liked surveying. I'm the county engineer also, or excuse me, county surveyor in Goodie and Dodge County. And so I went to St. Cloud State, graduated. Then I went to a vocational school for a year and a half and got my surveying information all together. And I thought I'd give it a try, and 30 years later, I guess I'm still doing it. So Building Code Administration is part of the Land Use Management Department, which is building code, septics, and wells and septics, environmental health, land surveying, GIS. And what else we have? Oh, and then I'm also the county recorder. So all the land issues are kind of together. We all work close together. Go ahead. So in Building Code, a lot of you guys, you live out here, your parents probably built a house or a barn or something, or you've done that. What we do in our offices, we are, we're the regulators. And so once you guys build it, we get your plans, we make sure that it's, we saw the safety codes. And so some of the stuff is like, make sure like on a house that you have ingress and egress windows, your mechanical systems are all together. And a lot of it is really kind of your structural items. Go ahead. So we review all the plans, we mark them up, make sure that they meet code compliance. And as you know, things are changing constantly. Just the type of buildings that we build, everything from solar to the ICF, the insulated concrete, concrete forms. It changes all the time, so we have to stay on top of the industry standards on that. And it's a lot easier to get some of those non-compliant things together in the beginning while you're in the planning stage, rather than when you're out there and building, then we have to stop the project. Go ahead. So we do the inspections, we do the roofing inspections all through. I believe it's, if you're doing a new house, you're probably talking 15 to 20 inspections that we come out and check. It has to be accessible. This is another one of those jobs that is inside and outside, but you get to see some really cool projects as a building inspector going through there. Okay? So what you need to be a building official or inspector is you need some education in the building trades. Usually that's like a two-year program, and I think Dakota Tech has a program up there. Anything, you know, starting out at that, and then you take a little bit of experience, you come on the job, and then you take a number of exams to become licensed or certified as a building inspector. Okay? And if they're not enforced, you got some serious problems. And I know you've seen on the news different fires and things collapsing and all that kind of stuff. And so that's why we're out there trying to catch it before that happens. A lot of times it's either places that don't have the building code or the older structures and things have been done without permits. And so we try to, try to get ahead of that and help the person make their project the best thing that they can make it, so.
Do you want survey or planning?
Let's do survey, because engineers are up. Surveying is so much better. This is surveying. You get to be outside, you get to do all kinds of stuff. Typically, what land surveying does in our offices, we, we, a lot of times create the base information that we give off to the engineers or we give off to the planners, and, but we get to go a lot of different places and do, use a lot of the latest technology. Surveyors kind of came through with the GPS back in the 80s and really kind of refined it. So now, as you know, Jess said, and, or Cory and Alex said, it's everywhere and it's on your machines and your equipment too, so. Go ahead. But about surveying is you really have to like history, because we have to go back. And even though everything's being built, it's our job to make sure that it's on the right property. And we're going back and finding the original survey monuments that were placed back in the 1800s. And so if you like history and like reading maps and then trying to go out and find this, it's like a treasure hunt. It was really a fun job. Okay? And go ahead. So this is some of the other things that we do. We provide, again, like I said, the base data. So we did in 20, what year is this? 2020, we did a high-resolution LIDAR flight. And so we created the base map information. And from that, if you go out on our website, on our parcel mapping, you can turn on these different layers. The one on the right is the landforms, so that's your senior hills and your rivers. And the bottom one is the LIDAR, and you can see all the dimensions, all the parts of the trees and everything. This is, actually, this project is the only one in the nation at this scale and this accuracy that's been done to this point. So it's a pretty big deal. And all that information, again, is given to a highway department so that they don't have to send people out to collect that initial data in the beginning. Go ahead. And then, as they, before they go out and construct the roads, they'll do the designing. And then what we have to do is we have to plot it. So again, we have to make sure it's in the right place, on the right property. And so we'll do that, and as that gets done, then they can go out and construct it, and they know their limits of their project. Okay? We also check all the plots that come through the county, so that's if you have new subdivisions. We check all that, and then we put it into our geographic information system. Okay? And then this is our parcel mapping again, so we've, we've mapped every parcel in the county. Any, every land parcel in the county, you can pick on the parcel and see all the tax information. And then you can also go onto the site and see all the past aerial photography and other information on that. So in order to be a surveyor, again, just like engineering, you have to do math. You do a lot of historical research. So again, if you like looking at old records and learning what was there before, you gotta like to be outside. And, and technology, again, is really big. We, we're trying to stay on top of all of that. If you want a degree, if you, excuse me, if you want a license in, in surveying, you get a surveying degree or related degree, and then you get mentored under a licensed surveyor, and then you pass three exams. It's a little more complicated, and actually, it's an excellent time to become, go into surveying, because there's not many of us, not many at all. So there'll be a lot of county surveyor jobs coming up and a lot of surveying jobs in all these engineering companies, because there's just not a lot. So be a really good time for you guys to get in, and it'd be, you'd have a chance to pick where you wanna go. Okay? And planning. That one. Planning and zoning. We're currently looking for a zoning person, so this is another good position. Planning, does the land design and where things are gonna go, how you're gonna, we're gonna have development and that kind of thing. County planning is a little bit different. We're dealing more, like you heard earlier today, feedlots and those kind of requests outside of the cities. And then zoning is the same thing, is now that we've got our plan and we've got our rules, now we have to enforce those. Okay? So we do a lot of different plans and ministers. So we've got our comprehensive plan, zoning, transportation plan, subdivision control. We work with all the different soil and water businesses, property owners. This is another job in Good Hugh County anyway, where it's, it's mostly inside, but we do a lot of site visits when we have to go out and somebody makes a request, we go out and review the land. And also, when there's a lot of enforcement issues, we go out and do that too. Go ahead. So we look at the current conditions and look at future projects. And again, how do you wanna, do you wanna make it all housing in Goodie County? Do you wanna keep it farmland? So there's a lot of struggles and a lot of public hearings about that, because people have some pretty strong opinions. And you guys being out here in this rural part, just think about up in Dakota County where it's wall-to-wall homes. Is that what you wanna see? And so this is what planning and zoning kind of gets involved in. And then again, we do the ordinances, and a lot of it is setbacks. So how far from the river? How far from another house? How far from the feedlot? All that has to come into play, and so there's a lot of, lot of work, a lot of personal work with individuals and with the landowners. Okay? So we also do a lot of planning and meetings, and some of them can get very contentious. And what's interesting is, I remember in Cherry Grove, we had one turkey farm, and everybody in the township came out and complained about it. And then the next meeting, a month later, two miles down the road, there was another similar project, and nobody came to the meeting. So it always depends on where you're asking and who's your neighbor, so. But there is a lot of meetings, and it's, if you ever watched Park and Rec? All right, not quite that bad, but it can get kind of wild. As far as professionals and trying to get into that, again, effective communicator, you gotta do your research. You gotta go back and see when things happen. You need to be a program manager. We have a lot of different programs that we have to manage, the finances and the process. And we use a lot of GIS and data. When I first started at Goodie County, it was a drawing on a paper map in front of a planning commission. And you remember where Joe's house is. Well, it's right next to him, so now we actually use maps. And education, there's a lot of degrees in urban studies and urban planning. My degree was not in urban stuff at all, because I didn't wanna deal with that, and here I am. But I was more the geology and that kind of thing in my geography degree. There's also American Institute of Certified Planners, and so there's a lot of different, different certifications that you can get with zoning. And there's schools, Mankato State, St. Cloud State, University of Iowa, University of Wisconsin. And there's schools, Mankato State, St. Cloud State, University of Iowa, University of Wisconsin. Um, and again, uh, as you get a little bit older, there's always zoning jobs, just because sometimes people don't like all the controversy and some people love it. So there's always, uh, zoning and planning jobs open. So, and I think that's all I got. Yep. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Collins Boxland. I'm with the sheriff's office. Um, I'm only speaking about computer forensics. Uh, what is computer forensics and how do we use it in the sheriff's office? I'm the captain of the investigation unit. Um, so we have one person that, um, does the computer forensics or examinations of cell phones, computers. Uh, she is sick today, so I'm filling in. So, um, but, uh, so we identify, preserve, extract documents. Uh, so everything that's on your phone, we could try and find and get that off of that. Um, finding key pieces of evidence, why do we want to use it? Um, so if you're involved in whatever type of crime you may have committed, um, we will either take your computers, uh, we will take your cell phones. We will write a search warrant for, um, for that device, and then we'll extract that. Next slide. Um, these are the type of devices that we'll go off of, that we use, uh, forensic, uh, examinations on. Anything that holds, uh, digital media, uh, computers, cell phones, CDs, drones, uh, external hard drives, uh, memory cards, all that stuff will contain, uh, digital uh, media on it. And we'll try to extract that. Next slide. Um, so how do we get that stuff off of, uh, your cell phone? Or, um, first we have to write a warrant. Uh, either you can give us consent that we can get into your phone to extract that stuff, that information. Or, um, we will write a search warrant. Um, the county attorney will approve our search warrant and the judge will sign that. Um, sometimes everything, everybody has a passcode on your cell phone. If you, you can choose to give it to us. If you don't, uh, it will just take longer for us to crack into that. We do have software that can try, that can get into your, your cell phones. Um, and once we get into your cell phone, we have everything that's on there. So if you're sharing, um, images that you don't want really to be seen again by myself or other people, you should, probably shouldn't put them on there. So, um, we also get, uh, text messages. Uh, it's a timeline, um, just a communication that in between yourself or a suspect or, um, just your communication. Uh, it's preserved for court. So the county attorneys are here. That's a very key pieces of evidence, uh, that they need to get their cases, uh, seen. So, um, how do we recover it? Uh, we're documented Excel sheet. Uh, we also have, uh, um, all kinds of hidden files in there. Um, it's not just that everything comes out and it's in a nice, uh, report for us. We have all other softwares that we extract the data, put that into the software. People are a lot smarter than myself. Um, people that have, uh, created this software so that it can get in, put into a nice, uh, readable and understandable, um, uh, document that can be preserved for court. Um, a lot of people have hidden apps. Um, Tris or, or forensic examiner uh, spends a lot of time looking for those apps. Uh, people hide their pictures, um, other kind of evidence, uh, that they don't want anyone else to see, like the calculator, a calendar. Um, she will be able to get into that and find that and preserve that, those images or documents that we need for our case. Uh, these are the type of cases that, uh, we use the forensic stuff for. Uh, child abuse, uh, pornographic investigations. Um, so a lot of people, um, on the, we're part of the ICAC, um, task force. It's Internet Crimes Against Children. So a lot of people will solicit, um, younger people to have them, send them um, nudes or, uh, inappropriate pictures. And what they're doing is that they will get a victim to send them the pictures and then they're in turn sending it and sharing to everybody else. And everybody might think it's just a picture, but that person is being um, a victim every time that that picture is shared. So we, we go out and investigate that. Uh, when we do go out and investigate a case like that, we take all their computers and cell phones. So some, so some search warrants we go out to, we're collecting forty to fifty digital devices. And then Tris will geage them and go through and look for those images and put that in a report. And then we'll be arrested or charged on how many images that person has. Um, and then the county attorney will make the appropriate charges and they'll be brought to court. So. So, back to that harassment, stalking, sexual conduct, uh, homicide, death investigations, drug cases, identity theft. We're all are doing that. On death investigation, we use the text messages, try to narrow the timeline when a party, um, last communicated. Um, we can use it for what towers or their, um, cellphone towers, they're, they're bouncing off of, try to put that person in that spot. Next one. Um, it's kind of where we look before emails, address books, contacts, all that information um, will be used for our case, just metadata, passwords. Um, the apps that you use, Snapchat, Facebook, uh, WhatsApp, uh, whatever other type of social media is out there. That's what we'll be getting to. And like I said earlier, when the files and images that are sent to the computer, they don't, and when you hit delete, they don't always delete. They're always still on there. So, um, if you have a computer and you're sharing information on the computer, um, and then you delete it, it takes time for the computer to overwrite that deleted image. So when we, when Tris searches the computers, uh, it'll come back and she'll be able to find that deleted image or deleted text message, which is very key in our investigations. Okay? Um, it, it is time consuming, um, being a, a computer forensic examiner. Um, it takes patience. Uh, it takes being a team worker. Um, she works with, uh, our agencies, City of Red Wing, Canyon. Um, she's assisted the BCA Bureau Criminal Apprehension in Minnesota here, um, Wisconsin. So she's working as a team and is persistent and tenacious about when she looks into that. Um, so she also works with the county attorney and other agencies here. The training, uh, we have all the celebrate, um, kind of the software that we use here. Computer forensics, uh, the courses that she went to, um, just those, the things that, uh, she works on. Next. Alright. You were.
Collins, what were you thinking of doing when you were there at high school? I grew up here in Canyon. I graduated here. I grew up on a farm just north of town here. I actually was sixteen and fifteen, I was going to farm. Um, and then something changed and I wanted to go into law work. So I went to Norndale Community College for a year. And I started an internship here with the Goodview County Sheriff's Office. Turned into a job as a. So I was a dispatch patrol. P nine handler, patrol sergeant, investigator.
Morning. How you guys doing? Pay attention, Kate, because this is the best one you're gonna see. Walk with this thing. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with a question for you real quick. Any of that stuff interest you yet? Wow. Lisa, you see that? So anyhow, um, public safety, I'm gonna talk about emergency communications and emergency management division of the sheriff's office. My name's Captain Chad Stefan. I oversee both of those divisions. So the questions I'm gonna ask you is, how many would like to go home at the end of your shift every day, sit down next to your sniffing other and say, I can't make this stuff up and share a story. Sounds kind of neat, right? How many would like to see something different every day? The stuff you see different is you can't make this stuff up, right? And I wish I would have had a notebook when I started in public safety. So, but you know, it's, it's an interesting, high-speed, uh, um, field to get in. And then I'll talk about why. Go ahead, Bill Briggs. So emergency management communications division. So I already mentioned that I, I'm commander of both those divisions and I, and I oversee the operation, the direction, uh, planning and control those divisions and their respective responsibilities. Emergency communications, what do you think when you think emergency communications? Nine one one, who said that? Something back there? Yeah. Everyone thinks nine one one, right? But truly, that is one of three big parts of nine one one. Or emergency communication ecosystems. You have nine one one, you have LMR known as LAN Mobile Radio System. That, that's what, you know, all of our first responders have on their hip, it's a radio. You also have IPOS. IPOS is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. Those are everything from the sirens to code red alert messages to wireless alerts. How many of you have gotten an Amber alert on your cell phone? Right? That is part of the emergency communications network and most systems. And then you have wireless broadband, which basically encompasses wireless data today. Um, so my job, day in and day out, is the planning and coordination of these systems, the configuration updates in these systems, so they remain robust, resilient and effective, right? They change by the week. I think, uh, our IT director here today will tell you, Chad calls me every other week with a new idea or a new thing, right? And so, but we have to stay on our game. We have to stay on our toes. The criminals, the bad guys that we chase around, they're using technology, right? All of our public safety officials, including our law enforcement officers, have to stay up to date on that. And so I went to school to be a cop. When I was in high school sitting around, I thought, God, being a cop would be really cool. And, and it is, and it is rewarding. It's one of the best things you can do for your community. But at the same time, within the role of public safety, you have police, you have EMS, and you're on fire. And there's a lot of additional things within that track that you can do. I'm kind of into tech things. Sometimes I wonder why I didn't go to school for information technology, but I got the best of both worlds at this point. Next slide. There's a bunch of pictures. Some of those pictures, the first three on the top left are inside the radio shelter at a tower. Think of a radio tower, got some antennas on there, right? All that is public safety equipment. Inside those shelters, you see everything from radio channels to siren alarm systems to battery backup systems and so on. And then you can see Public Works uses our radio systems, claw drivers, every governmental agency that is typically on some form of radio system today is using the statewide armor system. Next slide. Here's some more pictures. You can see one of our deputies on top of the tower at the law enforcement side there in Red Wing. Uh, those, uh, command vehicles, command vehicles play a large role in emergency management. What is emergency management's role? Well, preparedness, mitigation, response and recovery, right? A tornado comes through a community, we wanna, before that even comes through, we want to mitigate any damage that tornado could cause. Then we want to respond to that and then we want to recover from that. So we use tools from both divisions. And a lot of those tools are communications, right? So then you see a water tower. A big group of staff that we have in the emergency communications division is our nine one one public safety telecommunications, also known formerly as a dispatcher. And so the top middle screen there, you can see one of our dispatch workstations. When you call nine one one, it's not just answer that call, look at the map and send who you want. There's so much more involved. You can only imagine the data, and maybe you don't know this, but when you do call nine one one for your Android or your Apple device, how much data shows up? If you put your emergency data or information in there, which I encourage all of you to do, that shows up. We know who your emergency point of contact is, so on and so forth. We can narrow it down to almost a ten by ten square on a large parcel. So, and, and that technology keeps continuing. And so it's just staying on top of that. Next slide. A lot more pictures here. Some of these pictures are from drills that we have done with other jurisdictions, not just in Goodview County, but our neighboring counties. And you can see Deputy ATM up on a water tower there, myself down in Miami, Florida at a conference. And working at that time when I was down there, I was able to see the Verizon response vehicle and AT&T's FirstNet response vehicle. That's some neat stuff. That's the type of stuff you would see roll in if your community was devastated by severe weather or something else. Excellent. So here is my ending statement to you all. Get involved in public safety. It is interesting. It is rewarding. You do get to go home every day and go, man, you cannot make this stuff up, right? And, uh, because you can't. Um, and it's nice to learn something new every day and have a different experience. But at the end of the day, it's also about serving your community. So here's what I would encourage you to do. If you don't know what you're gonna do today, go to college, earn that degree in some way, shape or form. I recommend law enforcement, right? That's a good field to get into right now. A lot of jobs. Law enforcement, EMS, emergency management. North Dakota State University has an awesome emergency management program. If you're interested in that, you can become a public safety telecommunications sheriff's deputy, detention deputies. We need all of those. We are hiring. We are. We are hiring. And so not just Goodview County, everyone, but Goodview County is the best place to work, right? Exploit your abilities and find your niche. I want to be a cop, but I knew that I had more abilities beyond just being a cop. I knew I could do other things. I consider public administration. I consider some type of information technology track. Um, but if you get into public safety, like exploit your ability, show that agency what you're capable of, right? And be assertive, work hard and tackle more. That's my advice for you. As far as communications, it's, emergency communications is, is a large world. Those ecosystems are not going away. You can do everything from become a FEMA recognized communications leader, communications technician. Both are, uh, positions that I hold and can be deployed across the country for different natural disasters. Um, you can earn your emergency management certificate, another large, growing, important role for every county. So the sheriff's office, fire departments, police departments, or EMS agencies, we need professionals that can do jackwell traits. Not just that field, right? And that is important for all public safety agencies. Next slide.
That's it?
That's it. Alright. So, was that interesting? Somebody in my, want to go into something? Yes, sir. It's probably inappropriate. So, um, because that's typically a lot of what it is, right? It's, it, it, but and that's where I said, I wish I would have wrote that stuff down. Not long ago, I gave every one of our public safety telecommunications a notebook. And said, I encourage you to write that stuff down. So when you get that question, you can say, hey, yeah, I remember this, right? Excluding obviously personal identifiable information. But to go home at the end of your day or the end of your career and say, yeah, I can't make this up. Look at this and refer back, right? Because we have them, but you can never remember when someone asks them. And, uh, I had a, I had a public safety telecommunications who nearly started in the last year. And I said, what do you like about working for Goodview County? And she leaned back in her chair, then she said, the fact that I can hang up after a call, that the call's been resolved. And she, I can look at my partner X man and go, what the hell? And just shake my head. She goes, it's actually kind of rewarding, right? Because you can't make this stuff up, but you also know at the end of the day, the job that she did made a difference. And, uh, it's a relief just to take that deep breath, right? So to save a life or whatever it may be. So, thank you, everyone.
Dan, are you still on a hard eleven?
No, we're fine.
Okay. Alright, because we got three more people still. Take your time.
Um, my name is Heather Stevens, and I'm the captain at the jail. Um, what I did, what I wanted to be when I grew up, um, when I was a senior in high school, I wanted to go to law school. Um, I went to Saint Cloud State, earned my degree, ran out of money, didn't go to law school. Um, you probably know it's very expensive, right? So I needed a job. Um, I needed to make some money. And so, a friend of mine referred me to a position, a detention deputy position, and head up in county. Applied for it, got it. Uh, started as a detention deputy, worked my up, way up to detention sergeant. Um, I spent twenty-one years in Minneapolis in the big city. Decided I needed to get out. Um, I then took a promotion, became a lieutenant in Malax County, which is in Malaca, which is a real small town in central Minnesota. And then, uh, two years ago, I came here as the captain of the jail. Since we don't have audio, I'm gonna go with plan B, fly by the seat of my pants here. So when I see the word jail, what do you guys have in mind? What do you see in your mind? What does jail look like? Bars? Okay, what else? What's that? Big? Okay. What else? Secluded area? Okay.
Cold.
Cold? Meaning temperature-wise? Okay, okay. Okay, alright. Atmosphere too, as well? Okay. What else? Loud? Lots of yelling? Okay. Have any of you seen the TV show Jail? On, it's like on Spike TV, it's kind of a reality show. Okay, how about Sixty Days In? Yeah, Sixty Days In? How about Orange is the New Black? Anybody? Okay. So any of those shows that you see on TV, throw them out the window. That is not what jail is. So when you say bars and cold and loud and secluded, that is none of what jail is. Okay? Uh, as a typical rule, when you walk into one of our housing units, it is as quiet as this room. And there's generally about fifty-eight people in there. And it is as quiet. Um, and the reason it's so quiet is we have two TVs in there, and you think, wow, it'd be really loud and blaring, and they're playing games and watching TV. Everybody has earbuds. Everything is played through earbuds. So the day room is absolutely quiet. Okay? Um, as far as bars, we don't have bars. Um, in our general population areas, they have wooden doors. Probably very similar to what you have on your bedroom at home. It's wooden bars. Um, if we wanna make it as comfortable as possible, we don't wanna isolate people. When you isolate people, plays with your mind, right? Think about, think about COVID. Thinking about, think about being locked up at home, secluded for fourteen days, twenty-one days, sixty days. It's been going on for a couple of years, right? You're going stir crazy. Right? Anybody? Except for me? I don't know. Um, so we don't, we don't wanna seclude them. We wanna, and we wanna make it, um, we wanna make it as friendly as possible. We want to make them a better person when they leave as opposed to when they came in. So we offer a variety of things. We do jail programming. Uh, we offer uh, groups like Teen Challenge AA. Um, they get to go to recreation. We have a gym. They can go down and work out and shoot basketball and watch movies and play video games and become a better person when they leave. Now, anybody think that's weird? Yeah? Why? Yep. Right, right. So when we talk about who we want as employees, right? Um, we couldn't play our employee spotlight. Um, our employee spotlight is Nicole. She actually went to college for wildlife management and biology. Okay? Um, of course, there's careers out there in, in criminal justice, um, corrections. There's a couple of colleges that are, that are starting to get a corrections degree as well. Um, but we're looking for a very wide, diverse group of employees. Um, we have folks who have math degrees. Um, Nicole has a wildlife management degree. Um, we want folks, anybody in here have the gift of gab? Like you go, oh my God, they talk so much. Anybody? Or you know somebody that has the gift of gab, right? Yeah, send them my way. Because all we do all day long is we talk to people. That's what we do. We deal with people. We deal with people on their very worst day. So we want to talk to them, reassure them, calm them down, de-escalate them, make them comfortable. The folks we have in jail, um, we have a variety of folks in jail. Uh, when someone gets newly arrested, we call that pre-trial. They're waiting to go to court, have their day in court. Um, they're, wait for their final disposition on their, whatever they're being charged with, um, whether they're set free or they get found guilty. If they're found guilty and they get sentenced to anything less than a year, they spend their time in our jail. If they get sentenced to anything more than a year, they are sent to the state prisons. So, um, we have folks who are innocent until proven guilty, and then we have folks who have been found guilty and are serving time in our jail as well. So, any questions? Done? Alright. I want a different spot. I don't wanna be after Chad next year.
Everybody's going before Chad next year.
Everybody's going before Chad. It's like he was hosting a game show.
So we're gonna wrap up a little bit, so if you wanna go to the next slide. So Amanda, do you wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Amanda Holst. I am our HR generalist. Um, I come, um, to Good Hugh County from the private sector. Um, I came from a bank in Saint Cloud, right at HR there for about ten years. Um, I am a Saint Cloud State alumni. Um, I went for business management, and I have a minor in psychology. Um, in high school, I didn't know exactly what I wanted to do, so I just thought business is pretty broad. Um, my first work-study job at Saint Cloud State was in the payroll department. I had the uh, student payroll, and I really liked that. So then I, um, found a job in payroll after college and just kind of grown since there.
Can you briefly explain the, the uh, HR?
Uh, human resources.
Working with?
Working with people, um, in the organization. Um, we do all sorts of things from onboarding, hiring people, recruiting. Um, if there's employee relations issues, um, compensation benefits, it's a very large field to get into.
And then I'm Greg Stople. I'm the average and communications specialist. I've actually been with, uh, in this role for more than a year. Uh, but before this, I was an intern with public administration team, and it was a great internship to have. They carried me throughout the year, and then I applied for this position and was lucky enough to get it. So uh, uh, it's been a great role so far. I actually have a public sector background, so a lot of my internships and a lot of my professional experience has been with uh, other government agencies, nonprofits, stuff like that. And I'm really from the University of Minnesota, so uh, go Gophers. So just a little bit about Good Hugh County and the governmental uh, structure. We weren't able to play a video for you guys. What? Oh.
Good Hugh County is comprised of five commissioners. We have a sheriff, a county attorney, and then within the rest of the employees, we are broken out into thirteen different departments.
And we did have a video that we were gonna show you going into a little bit more depth, and we're gonna share all those videos with Dan, so you guys can watch those later. You're guys locked. But we've talked about all the great variety of work that we have with the county. Uh, we, it's a great location, beautiful surroundings, phenomenal workplace. So we're asking for you guys to come back and join us. Uh, either right after you guys get out of high school, or if you guys go off into the career. Uh, if you guys go off into college, you guys wanna come back and work for us, that'd be great as well.
Uh, we wanna compare, um, private sector versus public sector. When you leave, you're gonna have uh, so many opportunities for different jobs. Um, so in the private sector, you might have more um, earnings upfront, like higher starting pay, but in the public sector, there is more potential for long-term growth, more of a steady income um, versus the private sector where it could be, um, based on like income and bonuses based on profitability, um, kind of how the company does overall. In the private sector, you're a little bit more limited to the variety of work. For example, if you go into like the manufacturing industry, that's kind of what you would stick with as manufacturing. Where in the public sector, um, you've seen the variety of work that we've done here today with all of the speakers. You know, we have the county attorney's office. We have health and human services. Um, just really the options are endless within the county. Um, within the private sector, your benefits vary. So depending on the organization, you might have zero benefits. They might not provide health and retirement plan. Um, but in the public sector, um, there is a retirement plan, um, and different benefits offered to employees. Um, there's also less volatile to layoffs in the public sector, and then also, um, I think very important, the civic pride. It's really cool to work in the community in which you live and help all of the employees working there.
Just talking about work variety. I mean, uh, you, you've seen it here on uh, display today. You've seen all the different places that we touch and everything that uh, goes on within the county, but actually breaking down every single job, I believe we have uh, three hundred and sixty-some plus employees, and we've broken down all their job titles. And typically, there are fourteen job clusters that you can range from, and we've marked each and every single job to see what they touch upon. And so these circles are actually synonymous with the amount of work variety that we have. So you can see there's a lot of human services, a lot of finance job opportunities, a lot of law, public safety corrections and security. So both on display here today, but also in practice, there is just a lot of work variety in general with Good Hugh County and in public service.
Um, so the benefits of working at the county, um, so the benefits are set up to help employees live comfortably and to plan for retirement. Everybody wants to retire someday, and so these benefits help us get there. Um, the county has an HSA program, a health savings account, um, that they put money in for employees. So then you can use that to pay for your eligible medical expenses instead of having to pay for that from your regular paycheck. And we also have the pension program. Both the employer and employees contribute to this. Um, when employees retire from the county, they will continue to receive a paycheck from the pension program uh, for the rest of their lives. So that's a really cool benefit there. Um, we also offer a four fifty-seven plan, and this is another way to put money aside for retirement. And then also a cool program in the public sector is the public service loan forgiveness. So if you have any direct loans after you leave college, um, working in the public sector, as long as you make a hundred and twenty qualifying payments, the remaining balance is forgiven. So it's a, a great way to get part of your school paid for as well.
And I just gotta say, a year ago, I wasn't thinking about any of this whatsoever. So I'm no, I know you guys are probably just out of the mindset right now. You guys might forget all of this, but if there's something you guys are gonna take away from this, know that in the public sector, the amount of benefits that you guys will get allows you guys to live comfortably in your lives uh, versus in the private sector where you're constantly battling to just trying to uh, make ends meet sometimes. That's kind of an issue that I've heard from a lot of my friends who do or work in the public sector. Uh, for example, I have a friend who works in the private sector, and uh, they're sick right now, but they had to go to work today because uh, they ran out of PTO. And that's an issue. But they had to show up in order to make sure they got a paycheck. But with the government, we have separation of those kind of things as well. So public sector, there's a lot more benefits there as well. Like I said, the paycheck might not be as much upfront, but in benefits, it makes up for it long-term. Oh, opportunities. This is my slide. Uh, so there's a lot of things you guys can start off on the base. You heard a lot of us talk about how we started with the county with summer internships. It's a great time to learn a little bit more about kind of the ins and outs of the county, but also kind of understanding what people do on a day-to-day basis. I think there's an opportunity to job shadow someone as well. You can learn a lot that way. And personally, I learned a lot more through uh, experience versus just kind of reading something on a book. So I know that when I came to the county, I learned a lot more about local government in general versus just reading it through a textbook. Uh, so you guys can come and work here, uh, if you guys are in college for summer internship, and you can get workforce experience, and that looks good on a resume, but also potential college credit as well. Uh, and there's also non-degree jobs, so that does require some previous work experience, but that can be stuff that you guys can apply to when you guys get out of uh, high school. And those can include highway maintenance, facilities maintenance, office assistance, and many more. But there are also degree jobs that we've talked about as well, where you guys can apply after you guys come back from college. Or there's currently an opportunity through our ARPA grant funds, where if you guys wanted to go to Minnesota State College, uh, and you guys wanted to work in a certain degree field, you guys could potentially get an offer for a job right outside of, right outside of college. So you guys could have your college paid for and get a, a job right out of the bat. So that's a great opportunity to look into as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, for us or anyone else in the room as well.
And Dan, one thing I'll throw at, there is about seven or eight other managers here that if you wanna, wanna have them answer the same question we can, they weren't part of the presentation, but if they are, okay, Brian, why don't you start rolling through? Answer Dan's question. Uh, Mary, um, answer in the microphone.
Uh, well, first of all, Brian Anderson, Audit Your Treasure Finance Director for Good Hugh County. And to answer your question, I wanted to do something in business management. And um, didn't exactly go in that trap. I ended up with a two-year degree from Vermillion Community College. And a lot of research technologies, I started out in the public works department, uh, continued on, got my first full-time job at the city of Lakeville, continued on and got a four-year degree in um, public, uh, management, continued on and got my MBA from Saint Thomas after that, and I continued to work my way up. I actually went into then, um, city administration, and now I'm over here back in finance. And uh, so you never know where life's gonna lead you, I guess, is kind of the, the answer. So, I would say, um, keep your minds open to, uh, new opportunities and personalities and uh, never hurts to make more friends, because you, I've been to Lakeville twice, actually, worked in there in the public works department and actually got called back after, and I was the assistant to the city administrator too, so. That would bring a bridge when you leave.
Andrew.
I'm Andrea Bank, and um, I went to University of Wisconsin River Falls, and I really did not know what I wanted to do. Um, I knew I liked numbers. I liked economics. So I got a degree in economics. Um, my first position with the county was a pilot project, and it was in court administration. And um, I collected fines, and the program went well. They offered me um, a full-time position. And after five years, I switched to county administration, and now, um, I work a, a lot on the budget and um, with the board and um, with all the departments. Um, so, that's it.
I'm Stacy Lance. I work in county administration as well. When I graduated, the only thing that was important to me was to move out of my parents' house. I didn't know what I wanted to do, where I was gonna go. So hey, what program can I find at the technical college in Rochester so I can move out of the house? Um, I have a legal secretary uh, certificate in my background. Um, it's a nine-month program. Um, I have the certificate. What was important uh, for me at that point, I understood the benefits of working in government and the public sector. So for me, I wasn't really sure what kind of schooling I wanted to do, where I wanted to go further. I started working in government, and I started with Good Hugh County in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, I was hired by Public Health. Um, and here we are in twenty twenty-three. Um, and I am one of those people without a degree that will be reaping the benefits. Um, you know, whether the benefits today are benefits in uh, retirement, because I didn't know what I wanted to do other than moving out of the house. Um, my encouragement to all of you is that there are a lot of things out there. Ask questions, ask questions, find the things that you like, and don't be afraid to try it.
My name is Lucas Stelling. I am the finance controller for the county. Essentially, what that means is I'm the head accountant. Uh, my job consists of uh, a lot of numbers, working with other agencies uh, throughout the state and other uh, county and local jurisdictions as well. Um, in high school, um, didn't really know exactly what I wanted to do. I toured a couple of different colleges. Uh, I wasn't too excited about it. Um, I took a couple accounting classes while I was in high school, and I thought, ah, this isn't too bad. Uh, but I decided that college wasn't really right for me at that time. I went off. I joined the Marine Corps, did that for five years. Got out, decided that it's time to go to college, um, and see what I had been missing out on. Um, very shortly after setting college, uh, I decided to go with uh, accounting as my degree. Um, so I got me a, my four-year degree. Um, as soon as I graduated, I got hired by a very large CBA firm, worked in downtown Minneapolis, did that for about nine years. Um, and then this job opportunity with the county came up, and I was very excited about that. Um, uh, so I've been with the county for about a year and a half now. Um, additionally, I have a lot of family members that um, have worked for the county over their lives. My father actually worked for Public Works. He retired from them um, in the twenty uh, in the twenty-tens. Um, and I also had uh, an uncle that retired from Public Works as well. So had a lot of family members that worked for the county. I knew what it was kind of all about and, and the benefits as well. So that's, that's how I got where I am now.
Good morning again. I'm Jessica Albrecht. I'm an HR manager here at, at Good Hugh County. One of three of my colleagues are up here as well. Um, I grew up in, in Good Hugh County, um, graduated from Lake City High School. When I was in high school, I took that career test, the assessment, and they're like, you should be a pharmaceutical salesperson. It's like, I don't think that's for me. What I knew at that time is that I knew I wanted to, to be in a career where I was helping people. Um, and so I set off and I did my, my two years at RCTC. After that, I decided to pursue international business at Bethel, and I did that for about a year. Um, got a summer, um, summer job, summer internship. And after about two weeks, they said, do you want to be here full-time? Um, so I applied for, for a full-time position there and actually was able to switch. And I've, I've had like every student experience that's possible. I actually switched to being a, um, adult in professional studies. So I did, um, night school from that point on until I got my degree in, in HR. Spent a couple of years at that employer, a large employer up in the Twin Cities. And unfortunately, they decided to outsource my entire team to India. So it was an interesting experience to be able to, um, be remote training individuals in, in India. Um, at that point in time, I decided I wanted to relocate back to, back to Goodview County, had an opportunity to work in HR in manufacturing. Lots of great experience there. Um, exposure to working with unions, which really set the table for my role now at Goodview County. We have six, six different unions that we, um, work with and we go through labor negotiations. And, um, Amanda pointed out, there's a lot of different, um, areas that, that we touch, just like IT, HR is a service organization. So we serve the employees who serve the residents of, of Goodview County. So I accomplished my goal of, of being able to help people, um, and have new opportunities. Lots of, you can't make this stuff up stories, just like Chad mentioned, just real different contexts and certainly not, um, shareable. But, um, lots, lots of excitement and lots of, um, rewarding opportunities working in HR for Goodview County.
And I'm Steve O'Keefe. I am your elected county attorney and I am an attorney. And so we have one of the more lengthy education tracks for the, uh, job positions that we're talking about today. So I, in high school, I didn't know really what I wanted to do. I thought about business. So I went to college and got a degree in accounting at St. John's up in Colleyville, Minnesota. Quickly after graduation, I realized that accounting wasn't the right fit for me in the long term. And in the back of my mind, I'd always thought about going to law school, so I ended up going to law school. So in order to be an attorney, you need a four-year college degree and then a three-year law degree on top of that in order to practice, uh, as an attorney. So career path wise, when I was in law school, another example of the importance of internships is I was clerked for the city of Minneapolis in their prosecutor's office, uh, for two years while I was in law school. And it exposed me to the idea of becoming prosecutor and working in public service and county offices. And that's what I ended up doing. When I graduated in the early nineties from law school, jobs were scarce. And, uh, one sector that was hiring at the time was public sector. And fortunately I'd interned with the city, uh, city attorney's office in Minneapolis. And I applied for a job in Goodview County to be an assistant county attorney. And that was a long time ago. So I've been an assistant, I was an assistant county attorney for 26 years before I became the elected county attorney. And I chose that path because the former county attorney, my boss, retired. And the position was open and it was just something that, uh, as far as career path goes and advancement, it just made sense. And again, the work that I do, I really enjoyed. So we get, we get involved in everything that the county does as, as county attorneys. And one of the big things that we do that you might be familiar with is prosecute criminal cases. So we work closely with law enforcement on the cases that they investigate. We bring charges and we prosecute those cases and bring them into court. So we spend a lot of time in court, a lot of time talking with law enforcement, a lot of time talking with the other departments about the issues that they're, they're facing with and provide legal advice to them. It's been a rewarding career and, uh, I encourage it for any of you. We also hire interns for summer. If any of you are thinking about law school, we are hiring interns. And I just found out that we have, we have, we're hiring a legal secretary. I didn't know Stacy was one. We could hire her.
But she likes county administration.
Yeah, she likes county. I knew that was gonna happen. That's right. So any interest? We love having people come and visit and show them around and show them what we do. So if you have any interest in the career path in law, feel free to give us a call and come and visit.
Morning, my name's Tom Day. I'm a human resources manager also, uh, along with Jessica and Ray. When I was in high school, um, I was more concerned about football than anything else and thought, wow, I'm gonna go to school and I'll be a veterinarian. And I got to stay with some, I'm supposed to be good at biology to do that. So, uh, that didn't really work out. I got involved, heavily involved in, in politics, um, got a political science degree, uh, ended up working for a congressman in Washington DC for a couple of years. Uh, he retired, I came back and became a lobbyist at State Capitol for 20 years. So I got paid to argue with people and tell people what I think and they give me money for that. So it was, it was a pretty good gig. I got tired of politics after 20 years and just playing the game and decided I'm just gonna get, just some mindless job. So I took a job as a security guard. And within two months, I was running the security company and doing all the human resources, even though I had no experience in human resources at all. And that's kind of how things have progressed from me to, to bring me to Goodview County. And, um, one thing that Amanda talked about is the civic pride. Being involved in politics my whole life, I think that's a very important thing to be able to return back to your communities. Um, and to be able to help and, and be, uh, part of the solution instead of just being the problem. The other piece of advice I always give kids is, as you follow my path, you under a lot of pressure right now to pick your school and pick your career and pick your job. Change as much as you want it to. Don't feel that you're locking into one thing. So I always know that, keep looking ahead, keep finding, I'm sure Chad talked about that as well. Be strong about what you do, but doesn't mean you have to stay on it. Find new niches and keep following that. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
I didn't plan on speaking today, so bear with me. Um, I'm one of, I'm the third HR manager for, uh, Goodview County. In high school, not really sure that I knew what I wanted to do, but I really wanted at one point to be an attorney. But life and finances get in the way, so I worked and worked. Um, and then put myself back through school as a continuing education adult. Earned my bachelor's in business administration and my master's in human resources. And at some point in there landed up, uh, in a human resources position. I've worked in the private sector in corporate America, worked in nonprofit. And now for in the public sector for Goodview County. I can tell you the public sector, wish I would have done it years ago. Great opportunities, always growth opportunities and really, um, good things to plan for your future. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Kuster. I'm one of the assistant county attorneys. I'm probably one of the weird people that always wanted to be a lawyer. I always knew that. Um, and if you're in that category, good for you. If you're not, don't worry about it. You'll find your way, you'll find your path. After high school, I went to four-year college. I went directly to law school. After that, I did a year, um, for, uh, two judges in Homestead County. I'd never heard of Goodview County because I'm from northern Minnesota. Then, uh, from the rural county, um, can't got an opportunity and have never looked back. Love the community, love the opportunities I can do. So however many of you have know what you want to do. If you don't, good for you. This is an opportunity to learn, to explore, to figure out what you're good at. Because you want to go into something that fits you, fits your skill set and most of all, your passion. What I love about being a prosecutor is you have great stories. You get to talk to people. You get to find out what was going on when maybe they did the stupidest thing in your life. And then they probably thought about that when they're in the back of a squad car. Probably before that, they might have been having a good time. But you know what? Make good decisions and don't put too much pressure on yourself.
Good morning again. I'm Jess Greenwood. I'm Goodview County's, uh, newly appointed county engineer. Um, still trying to figure out what I want to do with my life when I grow up. Uh, but until then, I'll, I'll do this engineering gig. Growing up, uh, I'm a farm kid. We, we farmed about 1,200 acres in southwest Minnesota. I really liked math, science, uh, and being outside, uh, playing in the dirt, um, building things. And I tried to figure out a career path. You know, when I was your guys' age and that's a tough thing to do, not knowing exactly what you want to do. But I saw the advantage of, of what the job as a civil engineer could do. It's a very broad category. You know, our civil engineering technician, two-year degree option, uh, gives you a lot of, a lot of width and breadth there as well. So it, if you're, if you're good in math and you're good in your sciences and, and you like to build stuff and you like a variety. Regardless of engineering, there's many jobs throughout county government, state government, city government. That affords a lot of variability in the job. You don't really want to get stuck doing the same thing every day. Well, maybe you do, but, um, we, we find the value in, in doing something different, being outside, being inside. Communicating with all sorts of people and, uh, ultimately giving back to the community. That's kind of what makes a job what it is. So, luck.
So again, I'm Greg Isaacson, um, just handed over the reins of the county engineer to, to Jess here. So it's a kind of a big day in my career. When I was in high school, I had absolutely no idea what I wanted to do, absolutely none. I liked the math and I liked the sciences. So I kind of stuck with those when I went to college, uh, went to Mankato State for a couple of years. Um, finally decided to go into engineering, so I ended up transferring out to South Dakota State and, and got my degree out there. My first job was as a corps of engineers and I built floodwalls in, uh, New Orleans and, uh, in the general area. That was really an exciting place to go right out of school. I then transferred into Kansas and worked with the military. Again, with the corps of engineers, rebuilt McConaughey Air Force Base for a B-2 bomber. That was a exciting, uh, job in itself. And then I worked in military, uh, master planning and just, uh, how do we, what's the forecast and how are we gonna rebuild army bases? In the general, uh, area of Kansas City. Wanted to get back to Minnesota, um, where my family was. My dad was a county engineer. So he suggested that I apply for a county engineer job, which I did. And, uh, that was in Fertile County and that started my career like, uh, 30 some years ago. Seven years later, when I came to Goodview because I just loved this area. It was so nice with the rivers and the geography. And the whole bit, and that's what drew me to this area and, and we just never left it. But what I really like about the job is besides we come to see the county commissioners, who are your boss, this is my boss. And the rest of the time as a county engineer, I'm running the department. So we've got so many different things we do. You, you heard from some of the guys that, uh, work on, on building roads. But besides building roads, we do planning, we do transportation plans to figure out what do we need to build 20 years from now. And then there's the whole other side of it, the maintenance side of it, the guys with the snowplows and buying equipment. And one thing about this job is, is it has a huge variety of things you work at. It's not, you're not, not going to work doing the same thing every day. You walk into work thinking, I'm gonna start, this is the first thing. And by the end of the day, you didn't even start it because there were too many other things that came up that were more important. If you like variety, if you like sciences, if you like the math, working in engineering, working specifically civil engineering, because it gets you outside. So with that, um, to go to Scott.
Okay, so I'm the county administrator, so I essentially oversee operations. I get to work with all these wonderful people you've seen today. And I probably, Greg just talked about variety, but I think I have the most variety of any job in the county. There's no day that I do the same thing twice. Other than Tuesdays, I do, do, do county board, but, but otherwise every day is variety. So, so how did I get here? So I, I went to college and then wanted to be a medical doctor. So I went through four years of biology and chemistry and, and, uh, lots of calculus and stuff and, and graduated with that. And I got out and I said, you know, I don't know if I want to do that for the rest of my life. And at the time, my brother was the assistant city manager in Bloomington. Of course, what was being built there, the Mall of America. So I got to watch my brother build that project. And I said, yeah, that's kind of interesting. And so I looked into, uh, public administration and urban planning and economic development type programs and ended up, uh, take, getting a master's in public administration. And I fortunately, uh, got to start with the city of Fertile as an intern, uh, 27, 8 years ago now. So, um, and I've worked on both the city side and the county side and it's a, it's a very rewarding career. It's, it's wonderful. Like I say, if you want variety in life, you're gonna get it every day. So it's a, it's a wonderful career, so. And I think that's our last speaker, Dan.
Thank you for coming down to Kenyon. Uh, thank you for presenting for all of the different, uh, possible professions. We are running behind, so we will head back. Uh, you can go right to fifth hour. And, uh, yeah, so we'll, we gotta get rolling.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you all for coming.